Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Roseville City Council Meeting of October 15th, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask our clerk to please read the roll.
Thank you. We'll start off with Vice Mayor Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Haldishel.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Here.
And Mayor Bernuscony.
Here. Thank you. I'd like to ask the folks that are here from the Latino Leadership Council to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I'd like to ask our clerk to please announce the meeting procedures.
Thank you so very much. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to City of Roseville City Council Meeting. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table to your right or on our city's website. All comments from the public should be directed to the City Council and not to any staff member or the audience. All speakers must speak from the podium as this meeting is being recorded. For items not appearing on the agenda, members of the public may address the City Council regarding any item not listed on tonight's agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of our City Council. Public comment is limited to 25 minutes for the first segment, with each speaker having three minutes to make their comments. If time limitation is reached during our first segment, individuals will have a second opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting just prior to council comments. The Brown Act does prohibit the City Council from discussing, debating, or taking actions on items that are not listed on the agenda tonight. For all items appearing on the agenda, the Brown Act allows for public comment on every single item that's listed on tonight's agenda. Speakers will have five minutes to provide input that should be relevant to the item being considered tonight. Time will be monitored, and once the red light begins to blink at the podium, we request that the speaker please conclude their comments. The City Council encourages public participation and requests that you please be courteous during the meeting. Lastly, if addressing the City Council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. Without, welcome to the City of Roseville, and thank you for being here tonight. Mayor, if I may, there is one announcement. The city clerk, I'm sorry. On item 27, Public Facilities Fee Update Nexus Study Adoption and Roseville Municipal Code Amendment, again, this is item 27 on our agenda tonight, will be continued to the November 19, 2025, regularly scheduled meeting once council approves. So if anyone was here for that item, just be aware that that item will be moved to a different meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will move into public comment. Now is the time for anyone to come forward to make a comment on any item that's not on the agenda. I do have two speaker cards that I'll start with first. The first one is from Aria Prokash. If you want to come forward, and then afterwards, we'll call Jennifer Chapman. Good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, respected council members, and distinguished guests. Namaste. My name is Aria, and I'm a proud resident of the City of Roseville. I'm a volunteer for the Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangh, also known as HSS, which is an organization that promotes Hindu values, community spirit, and service. HSS follows the idea of Vasudev Kattumbukam, meaning the world is one family, and we believe that serving others is another way to serve the divine, as expressed in the saying, Narasava Narayanseva. Selfless service, or seva, is at the heart of our celebrations and daily life. All year round, HSS runs numerous different projects, such as helping food banks, cleaning up the environment, and offering educational programs. During Diwali, we focus on a very special project called Seva Diwali. This project brings many, many people together across the country to help fight food insecurity in our communities. Seva Diwali brings together thousands and thousands of volunteers from all over the country. The project invites people to use their homes as collection points for canned food, non-perishable items, and winter clothing. These donations go to local food banks, homeless shelters, so the spirit of Diwali and giving reaches those who need it the most. Last year, Seva Diwali made a huge difference. About 3,000 volunteers across the nation collected and distributed over 717,000 pounds of food and supplies in 38 states and 200-plus cities. Being the seventh consecutive year for the event, it involves 247 organizations, including Hindu, Jain, Buddhist, and Sikh temples, schools, and community groups. In the greater Sacramento area alone, there's about 8,500 pounds that were donated to various food banks, shelters, including Roseville Food Locker. The groups provided food to more than 266 food pantries, shelters, and community centers. These results show that we can achieve a lot when communities work together. We kindly request you and your guidance and assistance in identifying more local food banks, shelters that can benefit from our outreach. Your support will help us ensure that our efforts are inclusive and far-reaching as possible. We celebrate Diwali, as we celebrate Diwali, we wish to share its light and hope with all residents of Roseville. We believe that every single individual, regardless of their background, faith, or belief, deserves to be uplifted and respected. I am grateful to the City of Roseville for considering this initiative. I look forward to continuing to serve and support our diverse, growing community. Thank you, and namaste. Also, I would like to add on another thing. We brought Diwali gifts for the council members. If it's all right with you guys, can we hand it over to you?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Jennifer, do you want to come forward and make your comment?
Hi there. I just wanted to put in a plug for Dry Creek Conservancy's upcoming Creek Cleanups. There's three more. And it's just another great way to volunteer to do community service, as the previous speaker was just speaking of. In this case, this Saturday, there's, all these are on Saturday from 9:00 to noon. This Saturday, it's at Secret Ravine, which the meeting location is up 505 North Sunrise. They also have cleanup scheduled for November 1st, Saturday, and that one is at Olympus Point Sculpture Park. And the last one is November 15th at Royer Sogstedt Park, also 9:00 to noon. And I understand that, I really appreciate that the city supports these with providing, you know, the trash bins for all the waste that's collected. And I just understand that that's also somewhat of a logistical constraint about where these cleanups can take place, and just want to encourage, you know, possibly, you know, expanding. I know with ATVs and little motorized vehicles, there are ways of, you know, moving things around. And I think there's probably a lot of locations in this creek system, in Dry Creek watershed, that need cleanup and may have constraints. Logistically, they may not be as easy to get a truck nearby, but I think there's probably ways we can, you know, make it, make it possible to clean up some of the other areas, the creeks, and just appreciate the city's support for all that. Dry Creek Conservancy is really an amazing local resource. They're also going to be doing a lot of salmon surveys and have lots of volunteer opportunities for people that want to even get in the stream with the salmon, looking for salmon. I know that the communities downstream, closer more to the Sacramento River, I think there's a watershed or a creek called Steelhead, where their cleanups, they attribute largely to helping the salmon coming back, having, you know, more success up here upstream in our watershed. So these cleanups really make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to make a comment on any item that's not on the agenda? Now would be your time to come forward. We also have a public comment time at the end of our meeting as well. So if that's all that we have, I will close public comment, and we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Thank you. So on consent, our consent calendar is considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of our City Council. An item may be pulled for further discussion from any member of our City Council, staff, or the public. At this time, neither the City Council or staff has made such a request. Is there any member of the public that would like to pull an item for further discussion tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of our consent calendar. At this time, the City Council will consider consent calendar items 1 through 22. May I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Haldishel.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is the Council Discretionary Fund for the Latino Leadership Council.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The City Council received a request for Council Discretionary Funds for the Latino Leadership Council for an amount of $3,000 to support their Dia de los Muertos event taking place at the Roseville Town Square. Their inaugural Dia de los Muertos took place in 2024, and it was a community success. This year, they are once again making the request for this multiple-day event. We have Ms. Indira Infante from the Latino Leadership Network to answer any questions, should council have any tonight.
Okay. Does the council have any questions, maybe before we ask? Dear, if you'd like to come forward?
Yeah, yes, I do. And this would be appropriate for the speaker to address the sponsors that you've reached out to. Where are you on your fundraising goal? Where are you with printed material? Because there's a variety of sponsorship levels.
Yes. Good evening, dear City Council members and mayor. Thank you for this opportunity for Latino Leadership Council to be here and share this sponsorship request. At this time, we have about $11,500 of sponsorships. That includes businesses and some of our partners that did sponsor last year and are sponsoring again. Our goal is $20,000 to be able to provide the free activities and pay for the logistics of the event. As we mentioned in the request, we had over 3,000 people attend last year. We want to make sure that all of the community can come out and enjoy the free activities, which do cost, our cost last year was $18,000 for us to provide the event at the one-day Vernon Street Square. And this year, we're doing a two-day event at Denio's Market on Saturday and on the second here at Vernon Street.
And just real quick, because I know you'd like to have this young lady next to you say a few words, but can you just briefly share what the Latino Leadership Council does?
Thank you. Latino Leadership Council has been here in Placer County since 2007. For the last 18 years, we have been working vastly in all of Placer. We do have a large number of Roseville residents that we support. We support monolingual, Spanish-speaking families. Our pillars are youth, education, health. We are shifting some of our support to do workforce and economic development as well, really to highlight the positive impact Latinos bring to the community. We, again, serve about 3,000 a year all over Placer, but again, a huge concentration here in Roseville because of the large population of Latino Roseville residents. We work with hospitals, schools, the children's system of care, and the community to be able to provide free and voluntary services to those that we serve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I had a question. You're going to be having the function in two places, and one is in, down here in the plaza. How about security? Do our police or fire help, or tell me how that works and
Yes.
Cost and those things?
Yes. Last year, we did hire two security. We did have a partner from the community doing a beer garden. We are not having beer this year, so we do, we're only going to have one security guard on standby. My understanding from the Parks Department is that we don't need to provide security because we're not serving alcohol, but we are hiring one. And we also have the Roseville Police Department as one of our supporters, and they will also have a table there to be able to provide resources to the community.
Thank you.
Oh, I want to add really quick. I'm sorry. We had no incidents last year. Everything went really well. We had absolutely no issues. And we also have a Placer County probation juvenile department coming with some other youth to be able to do their community service hours. We had about 12 youth last year. There are two probation officers the entire day there as well, helping facilitate the volunteering. And one last thing, and I know our ambassador will also share, we're working with the Latino student unions from all of Placer, but specifically Roseville High School student unions from West Park, Oakmont, Roseville High School. We do have our Rockland High School as well, and some Ana Lope kiddos coming over. We had 48 volunteers from the high schools last year to be able to get everything together.
That's great.
Very nice.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys. And Alyssa would like to share some.
Dear council members, my name is Alyssa Flores, and I am a Latino Leadership Council Ambassador. Thank you for having us today. Last year, we had over 3,000 people attend our Dia de los Muertos celebration, including families. Bringing everybody together for the first time, no matter the background, was incredibly meaningful for the development of our community. This funding request will help us continue our mission to share our culture through the Dia de los Muertos event within our Roseville community in hopes of building further cultural awareness. Not only that, but we will also be providing free activities and resources for the families in attendance. We hope to be able to continue this tradition, as bringing Roseville together and celebration again would be an incredible opportunity. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, I'll bring it back to council for deliberation.
I apologize. I didn't ask our staff, but usually to use Vernon Town Square, there's a cost associated with that?
There is. There's a fee, and it's also reviewed by police and fire when the application's turned in to Parks and Recreation. So there's a process for all special events.
We, we've charged that fee. How much is that fee? Oh, sorry.
I don't have that.
Apologize for not having thought of it before this. You probably know the cost.
The cost to rent out the square?
Yeah.
It's about $2,500. We also are actually renting out the front of Vernon Street. We're going to have a classic car show there. So it's the side of Oak and then the front of Vernon Street.
You should have led with car show.
Yes. It's all Impalas, classic cars from '59 to '68.
Okay.
I have a question. Are there other cities that are helping to sponsor? Are you doing this type of event in, in other Placer County cities?
No. Lincoln does have their, I believe it's their ninth annual, and I believe they're a private event planning organization that does that. We're a nonprofit. I do know that Auburn does like a very small Dia de los Muertos event up there as well. Before we did this last year here in the community, we were doing a smaller Dia de los Muertos event at the Methodist Church on Church Street, working with CASA and our partners. That's one of the really important things to highlight as well, that we work with all of our community partners and other CBOs as well. So now that we're doing this, they're also invited. Health Education Council will be attending. Partnership California will be there. We have the Red Cross coming. I can also send you guys the map of all of the vendors that are coming and that are going to be participating. Nonprofits that come do not have a fee. They are free to join us.
That's great. Any other questions at the council? I realize I was remiss. I don't think I opened it up to public comment. So let me, if you want to just step aside real quick, and we'll see. Does anyone here tonight want to comment on this item? Now would be your time to come forward. That would be your time to come forward.
Hi, it's Jennifer, and I just want to say I was really excited when I saw them setting up last year for Dia de los Muertos, and then it was really amazing to realize that was the first year. This is a event that, you know, it's celebrated throughout, you know, the Americas really, and it has a lot of cultural, multicultural history associated with both Aztec and Catholic traditions. Anyway, I think it's a wonderful thing that we have this cultural event, and it was just very colorful and all kinds of wonderful activities and things for people to do to connect with, you know, what Dia de los Muertos is all about. I also think it's really important, mental health-wise, to, you know, actually address, you know, the idea of death in, you know, in a way, a different way, a different cultural way. I think it's important. So I guess with that, I just also want to say I hope we'll have Asian-American heritage and other cultural events as well throughout the city, because there's a lot of diversity here, and it's exciting to celebrate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the council. Just to recap, the City Council has $15,000 annually to distribute to nonprofits who come forward. And sometimes we have a balance that we roll over from the year before. So the request from the Latino Leadership Council is $3,000. Last year, we awarded them $500 for the event. And again, these funds last for us through the fiscal year, so the end of June of 2026.
Yeah, I'd be supportive of tripling the amount we did last year to make a contribution of $1,500 to this.
I would also be supportive of that.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yep, sure.
Thank you. So at this time, at this time, the motion is the City Council on item 23 will consider the recommendation to provide sponsorship to the Latino Leadership Council Incorporated from council discretionary funds in the amount of $15,000, I'm sorry, $15,000, $1,500.
There goes the money, yeah.
$1,500 for their second annual Dia de los Muertos event taking place November 1st and November 2nd in Roseville. With that, may I please have a motion to approve the $1,500?
I'll move it. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Haldishel.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes. Thank you.
There will be a mariachi band, right?
Mariachi, Aztec dancers, folk lute, food trucks, artists and vendors. Please come.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have you seen me dance?
Okay, we'll move on to the next item. If you, you guys are welcome to stay, but we'll just continue on with the meeting if you wanted to quietly exit. It's up to you. We'll move on with item number 24, Renewable Energy Credits Power Purchase Agreement.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Bernuscony and members of the council. Sean Matcham, Chief Operating Officer for Roseville Electric. Here with me this evening is Petra Wallace, our Power Supply and Portfolio Administrator. We have a brief presentation on this agenda item, an item that we're recommending the City Council's approval on. It is a 15-year power purchase agreement for renewable energy credits. And Petra will step through the details of this and the presentation, and we'll be glad to answer any questions you have once, once we're done.
Good evening, mayor and council members. On the slide here, hopefully.
Pull it up.
Maybe.
They're trying to pull it up.
Okay. We can wait a second for that. I can, I can talk some.
Just get started, and hopefully they'll catch up. They're usually really on, on top of it.
Yes, yeah, no worries. So the renewable portfolio standard, oh, there it is. There you go. Thank you. So the renewables portfolio standard was established in 2002, and that was really the foundation of California's renewable energy policy, and it was under Senate Bill 1078. The idea was simple, increase the amount of renewable energy utilities delivered to customers each year. That requirement, and now it's ramping up to 60%, so by 2030, Roseville Electric has to have 60% of their generation coming from renewable energy. Just to be clarifying here, that not every, every, you know, not every energy resource qualifies as renewable. So it's only solar, wind, geothermal, and small hydro that qualifies right now as renewable energy. Projects also need to meet environmental and deliverability standards. Compliance happens, thank you, compliance happens in multi-year periods called compliance periods. Each one sets specific percentage targets that utilities must meet. Each one sets specific percentage targets that utilities must meet. If a utility falls short, there can be financial penalties, so staying on track each period is key. Here's a look at how compliance periods play out. We are currently in compliance period five, so that it's calendar year 2025 through 2027 and the average renewable energy needs to be 52% of Roseville's load. As I mentioned earlier, by 2030, it has to be 60% and from there on out, it stays at 60%. An other requirement for this, to meeting renewable requirements, that 65% has to come from long-term contracts. So basically, the 60% of the renewable energy, of that 60%, 65% has to come from long-term contracts, which means 10 years or longer contracts. We can go to the next slide if we want to. So just to give a little background, Roseville has done a lot of renewable contracts or transactions back in 2013 and 2014. Those were all long-term contracts, they were 10-plus years, so those all kind of ended and rolled off from our portfolio. So about a year ago, we added a new renewable contract that was with Shell Energy that met, that's gonna meet Roseville's 14% of Roseville's renewable needs for 2030 compliance period and then on. So up until now, Roseville has met all the compliance period requirements, so we have been doing good, right now in compliance period five, so we are still working on making sure that we meet all the requirements. So this project that we are bringing forward, or one of the strategic additions, it's called Desert Breeze Solar Project. This contract directly supports our 2023 Integrated Resource Plan, so it's fully aligned with our long-term vision. It's a solar project located within the California ISO, or the California Independent System Operator, which means the energy qualifies as a Bucket One or PCC One, the highest compliance category that we need. We will receive about 49,000 PCC One renewable energy credits each year and that will cover about 7% of our 2030 renewable target. It is a 15-year fixed-price contract at $31 per credit, a very competitive rate in today's market, and commercial operation is expected in 2027, hopefully mid-2027, with a total contract value of about $22.8 million over the full term of the contract. The good news about this contract, that you only pay once the renewable energy credits have been transferred over to Roseville, so that mitigates most of our risk. So unless we receive the credits in this portal where we get renewable energy portals, we don't need to make any payments. So as of right now, Roseville is positioned well for ongoing RPS compliance and requirements. So if anybody has any questions, please feel free to ask any questions you may have.
Thank you, Petra. Does the council have any questions of staff before we open it up to public comment? Okay, I'll open up to public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this item? Now would be your time to come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for further deliberations or questions of staff or for, maybe for a motion. You know, a lot of work has gone into this, thank you very much. Okay, it sounds like we're ready.
Thank you. With that, on item 24, the city council will consider the recommendation to adopt Resolution Number 25-332, approving a power purchase agreement by and between the City of Roseville and Desert Breeze Solar LLC and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the City of Roseville. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
Still move.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Howdy Shell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Acucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes, thank you. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our next item, item number 25, Commercial Corridors Incentive Programs Implementation, and we will hear this evening from our Economic Development Team. Planning and a planner. Actually, you guys all have a background in planning too. We get a twofer. All right. Welcome.
Well, thank you and good evening, Mayor Bernasconi, members of the council. I'm Wayne Wiley, Economic Development Manager, and with me tonight, we have Gina McCall, Cities Economic Development Analyst, and Lauren Hawker, a senior planner from our Planning Division. And so we are excited to present this item before you tonight, as this has really been the culmination of efforts spanning over about three years. And as you hear tonight, this has really been a collaborative effort between the Cities Economic Development Team, excuse me, and the Planning Department. And so with that, I will turn it over to Gina McCall to give the presentation, as Lauren is here to help answer any questions, particularly as it's related to the implementation of the specific plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to Gina.
Thank you and good evening. So tonight, I'll be requesting your support on two new incentive programs for the commercial corridors planning areas, specifically the Development Impact Fee Credit Program and a Facade and Frontage Improvement Rebate Program. Both programs are intended to incentivize investment and redevelopment along the corridors. For some background, the three new specific plans were created to incentivize redevelopment in the commercial corridors and were adopted in November 2022 after an extensive community engagement process. Sequo clearance to streamline future development was also completed. Additionally, the plan showed utility capacity for up to 850 multifamily residential units across all three plan areas and was permitted in the commercial zones. Adopting the specific plans really sets clear expectations and allows for a streamlined approval process for redevelopment. Since the adoption, the city has been working on ways to reduce barriers for reinvestment. This slide highlights activities we are already doing to attract redevelopment to the plan areas. Economic Development and Development Services, as you heard, partnered to evaluate factors impacting reinvestment in the commercial corridors, specific plan areas, and to identify processes, programs, marketing opportunities, and the use of available grant funding to catalyze redevelopment. We created a dedicated website to highlight development advantages. We coordinated with other departments to align work. We funded pre-designed plans for opportunity sites and we completed two studies, a retail market analysis and a residential economic study, which I'll summarize in the next couple slides. And then finally, we developed criteria for two new programs to help offset redevelopment costs. So before we get into the two new proposed programs, I did want to give you an overview of the two studies that were completed. First, the Residential Economic Study. In summary, the study found residential development is not foreseeable, unfortunately, for the next 10 to 15 years without some incentives. Factors contributing to this include high land cost, high construction costs, high interest rates, and very few large site parcels to support a larger residential development. Affordable housing is more realistic utilizing existing subsidy programs and additional subsidies. Therefore, the recommendation is for funding to help offset development costs. For the retail market study, the study evaluated the condition and availability of retail properties, also spending habits, customer demographics, and complete area trade analysis. The study noted that the existing commercial area shows its age and needs some, and needs some updating to pull some additional retail to the area. The study also noted that the retail trade area is actually pretty large, it's beyond a five-mile radius with a true retail trade area of over 550,000 people. The study shows that there is an opportunity for restaurants to capitalize on those customers with a growth potential of over $113 million by 2029. So the recommendation was to outreach to property owners, brokers, and such to encourage redevelopment efforts and focus marketing efforts on future restaurants and support programs that encourage reinvestment. So both studies were provided as attachments to your staff report. So based on the findings from the studies, staff is proposing two new programs to offset redevelopment costs. The first is the Development Impact Fee Credit Program. This program will support larger projects that can act as catalyst for additional investment. To qualify, projects must align with the commercial corridor's specific plans and show how they will contribute to the economic vitality through job creation, sales tax generation, or significant reinvestment. Additionally, projects shall demonstrate a funding commitment as outlined in your staff report. Projects meeting the requirements may be eligible for up to $500,000 in fee credits on city-controlled impact fees. By reducing initial costs, the city's goal here is to encourage redevelopment that strengthens the corridors and sparks business investment. So the second program focuses on the outward appearance of properties to enhance community appeal, providing rebates to help offset the cost of exterior improvements. And this is really a replicated program of the existing downtown facade rebate program. For this program, property and business owners may qualify for up to $20,000 for materials and permit fee reimbursements. Eligible projects include facade improvements, landscaping, and frontage upgrades. This program is intended to help property owners modernize aging buildings and create more inviting spaces for customers, residents, and visitors. Consistency with the design guidelines in the commercial corridor's specific plans is required for eligibility. So with that, staff finds that the Development Impact Fee Credit Program and Facade and Frontage Rebate Program will help offset the cost of redevelopment in the targeted areas, that's consistent with what those two studies said. The incentives can be processed through a streamlined review process and processed concurrently with building permits. And then funding is also available, and it's available to support these programs utilizing the remaining, just over $1 million in the commercial corridors project budget, which is specifically allocated to implementation of the corridors. So, and we are targeting that a majority, or intending that a majority of the funds would go towards the Development Impact Fee Credit Program. I'm almost there. But before I conclude, I did want to highlight some additional city programs and efforts that have been identified for potential alignment with the proposed initiatives to further enhance incentives and support redevelopment of the commercial corridors. And so this includes, for marketing and outreach, we will be updating the website, highlighting the commercial corridors' advantages, incentives, and opportunity sites. We will also be doing targeted outreach to property owners, brokers, developers, and businesses, and promoting corridor opportunities through participation in industry conferences. We will be continuing the infill team coordination meetings, and that's a free pre-development review service that the city currently does. For development incentives, projects in the commercial corridors could also utilize the city's existing fee deferral program and extended fee deferral for affordable housing to help with project financing. We are also undergoing a citywide traffic fee analysis with council review anticipated at the end of this year or early next year, and the update may result in reduced traffic fees for redevelopment within the commercial corridors. Additional affordable housing funds are available, so that's one of the items there. A notice of funding availability was released that prioritized affordable housing funds in the commercial corridors and we will continue to look for additional funds. Environmental Utilities is also working on prioritized CIP lists that includes upgrades to water infrastructure. Sewer improvements are already underway with completion expected within four years. And additionally, improvement projects could take advantage of Environmental Utilities rebate offers for the conversion of landscaping and irrigation upgrades, which can also be paired with the Facade and Frontage Rebate Program for additional savings. And then finally, citywide, Roseville Electric is offering businesses and property owners a package of energy efficiency incentives tailored for small and medium businesses with enhanced rebate levels, making energy upgrades more cost-effective. So for the commercial corridors area, these rebates can also be paired with both programs for added savings. So these, we think that these proposed incentives represent a strong starting point for promoting activity along our commercial corridors, and we're optimistic that these efforts will help spark some interest in the corridors. And as I mentioned, for the next steps, assuming that council supports these new programs, we intend to open the applications and for the new programs with funding in early 2026. This will really allow for potential applicants an opportunity to reach out to economic development and planning to discuss potential projects and compliance with the specific plans, as well as pull together information for the building permits. So I provided contact information for us on that slide and they can go to our website again for more information on that. So that concludes my presentation, other than just the recommendation asking you to please consider adopting the resolution for the Commercial Corridors Development Impact Fee Credit Program and the resolution for the Commercial Corridors Facade and Frontage Improvement Rebate Program, and then authorizing the city manager to execute any required documents necessary to effectuate the programs.
Great, thank you very much. Before we open it up to public comment, does the council have questions of staff? And anyone want to start?
I just had a question. I think this sounds, this sounds fine and I'm just looking to see something that'll spark our area there. And you talked about affordable housing in different areas. Is there an opportunity, maybe after something like this gets started, that you'd be looking at for, like affordable housing for middle-income people or in apartments or, you know, other people?
High-density residential is a permitted use in that area, so that's certainly something that they could apply for.
And I think the hope would be that as you see some reinvestment in the area, that maybe that becomes more financially feasible earlier than that 10- to 15-year timeframe we were talking about earlier.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
No questions, staff hasn't already answered.
I have a few questions. So we, the council, and this plan is really three years old, not what we're talking about tonight. What have the conversations been like with property owners? Just say, for example, we tackle Harding or Douglas and Sunrise. We've got four corners there. What do those conversations look like with those property owners? Because essentially, we are asking them or putting incentives out there to them, a small fraction of what they would need to pay to really get their sites. But what do you hear from them?
Yeah, so we have been having conversations with them. At the point, it's just been that it's really expensive to redevelop the areas and so they're appreciative of anything that helps reduce those costs. If council supports these programs, we would continue to outreach to them and encourage them to apply for this.
Okay.
Is there, out of the three corridors, is there one that has a bigger priority? You know, sometimes when we focus on three things, then maybe, you know, one of them has to become more important. So is there one that we're going to be really aggressive about or we see as being the most viable?
We are looking at the community commercial zone properties along Douglas and Harding and Douglas and Sunrise. Those are really the ones that we see that there's some opportunities.
Okay. A few other, okay, if, just say, for example, and hopefully they take advantage of this and funds run out, then would you come back to council for seeking additional funding?
Yes, we would absolutely, yeah.
I mean, that would be best-case scenario, right? I mean, and I guess, well, just a few other questions. You said the 126 million leakage on retail. So in that analysis, were they saying where we're leaking to? Are we leaking to other parts of Roseville? Are we leaking, you know, down Interstate 80?
Beyond, yes.
Okay.
So just to provide a little clarification, there was a five-mile radius that was looked at, and so that leakage is outside of that radius.
Okay, okay, got it. Let's see. You know, one of the, I think, challenges, I guess it would be the northeast corner of Sunrise and Douglas. I can't even think what's in there right now. Parker's Hot Dogs comes to mind, Harbor Freight, but it just seems like structurally, we just don't make shopping centers like that anymore, you know, where they're set back, there's a ton of parking up front, you know. You know, where they're set back, there's a ton of parking up front, you know, little pads, you know. Are we optimistic that, you know, a facade grant to just upgrade their storefront is enough? And I know one of the challenges with that particular site is that we're dealing with so many property owners that aren't local, and it's hard to get them to come together. And it's been three years, and that's, you know, not necessarily a forever time, but what are we hoping, you know, like, what can we do to really reimagine that area? Because it has so much potential to it, and it's just not being utilized how shopping centers are. And maybe that's just a rhetorical question, but, you know, I feel really passionate about our city and how we grow and develop, and, you know, that is an entrance way for commerce. And we've heard from businesses that, you know, they direct traffic away from, you know, they direct it to Eureka, if they're trying to go east to get to Douglas, because it's not pretty, it's not attractive, even though there's long-time businesses in there. So I don't know if you need to end, if you want to respond to any of that, but my point is that I think we need to be really aggressive. And even though maybe those business owners aren't local, I mean, is there a way somehow that we can bring them together so that they can imagine what it would be like? I know they have to fork over, you know, capital and trying to get it funded, and those are all challenges, but I just don't know, I would hope that a facade would do it, but I feel like we even need more than that. So I'll stop and see if you guys have any response. But I appreciate you doing these, just questions on my mind about this.
Just highlight, again, the two programs that we're proposing tonight, because I think that addresses it. But for also background, we have funded the pre-design plans, which show what those sites could look like. They're underutilized. When I say that, that means there's additional square footage capacity that could be added onto those sites. So we can refer them to the pre-design plans, but the two programs, the facade rebate, so they can apply for that, that's for a more minor improvement upgrade, really just looking at improving the aesthetics of that facade to attract additional attention there. The other option is the Development Fee Credit Program, which would allow for offsetting some of those larger impact fees that you would see from a new, some new square footage being added there.
It has so much potential, right there, off a major interstate.
And that was all outlined, what that vision is for that area is all outlined in the specific plans.
And I appreciate that, and I appreciate your comment. This is something that we've discussed. I do want to highlight that, although it does sound like a lot of money, when you talk about the extent of some of these projects, it's kind of a drop in the bucket.
Oh, it's nothing.
Right, right. But our goal is to see maybe a catalyst project that then, as Lauren mentioned, incentivizes, encourages other reinvestment and revitalization into the area. And so I think for us, that would be kind of our strategic implementation of the funds with one large catalyst project, probably around housing, which helps then drive commercial development. So in our mind, that's how we foresee this kind of working out. That being said, we do want to offer this to anyone who's interested in, so that incremental increase in offsetting facade improvement costs might be the difference in helping someone make that decision, or a group of property owners making that investment.
Thank you, okay.
Mayor, you triggered something in my mind. You know, if we go right out here on Vernon Street, on either end of Vernon Street, he is a very, it's a welcoming, it's a wayfinding, it talks about the history. Apologize, I don't recall, is that in the corridors plan to do something like that? And when something like that's in place, does it then become a catalyst for that big block? And I don't know if it's one landowner, or one landowner and the pads, what are the opportunities there?
Yeah, we did have some streetscape improvement conceptual plans in the corridor plans. We did not get into the level of detail that, say, the downtown-specific plan does, because that project took, you know, depending on when you want to consider it, the start of that six to 10 years to get through. So basically, that would be another project. We have the framework laid out in the specific plan, so that if we wanted to get funding to do some design and other work out there, we could kick off that project at council's discretion to do some of those streetscape investments. But yeah, to everyone's point, I think our biggest goal here is we get some kind of catalyst project, because, you know, that corner there with all those property owners, if there was money in it, if there was good money in it, right, business owners, they might jump. And so we're really looking to get something, something, an engine going somewhere in the vicinity to incentivize that kind of work.
Mm-hmm. Got a lot of space there. Okay, anything else before I, did I already open it up to public comment? Okay, all right. I'll open up the public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this item? Now would be your time to come forward. Okay. Seen?
I, you know, I definitely think it's great that you're talking about revitalizing. There's definitely some, you know, tired areas, just, you know, you can see it's really old, commercial buildings. But just want to come back to Sunrise, which is such a complex traffic pattern, and just hoping that some of this planning effort will really take a hard look at some of these traffic patterns of the coming in and going out, and then people racing to get on Highway 80, but slowing down to go into the businesses and the residences. And it's complex, and it, I know that, you know, we always hear that some of these things with signaling and lights and traffic things, those are also investments and other monies, but I think they're going to be really needed if we're going to have a lot more in and out, say, just in the Sunrise corridor, as an example. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the council, either further deliberation or a motion if we're ready for that.
Motion.
Thank you. On item 25, the city council will consider the recommendation to adopt Resolution Number 25-333, approving the Commercial Corridor Development Impact Fee Credit Program, and adopt Resolution Number 25334, approving the Commercial Corridor Facade and Frontage Improvement Rebate Program. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Alverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Haldeshell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all very much for your work on this. We're excited to see what's going to come out of it. Okay, and the last item for us is item 26, Amoruso Ranch Community Facilities District, Improvement Area Number Two Bond Issuance.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. I'm Scott Pettengel, Finance Director for the city, and this evening, we're providing an overview of our recommendation regarding a bond issuance for the Amoruso Ranch Community Facilities District, or CFD, number one, improvement area number two. Beginning with some background, the purpose of establishing a CFD is to create a land-secured financing mechanism to fund the construction of authorized facilities and/or services. The Amoruso Ranch CFD number one, improvement area number two, was annexed into the district in March of 2025. This is the first bond issuance for this improvement area, and the total maximum bonded indebtedness is up to 30 million. The aggregate principal not to exceed amount is 10.5 million for this particular bond issuance. The authorized facilities that can be financed with the bonds are listed on this slide, and they include transportation improvements, including but not limited to Westbrook Boulevard and West Sunset Boulevard, as well as utility infrastructure and park and open space improvements. On this slide, we have a map that shows the Amoruso Ranch specific plan area where the CFD is located. And you can see it highlighted in a teal green towards the top of the slide, and we've also added a red arrow here pointing to its location. And in this next map, it zooms in to show the boundary of the improvement area outlined here in that bold black line. And for reference, Westbrook Boulevard runs north to south to the east of the CFD, and West Sunset Boulevard runs east to west at the top of the map there. So this evening, staff is recommending that council approve a resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds for Amoruso Ranch CFD number one, improvement area number two, along with the related actions and documents. And this includes the preliminary official statement, which will be used to market the bonds. This concludes my presentation this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Scott. Does council have any questions of Scott before we go to public comment? Open up a public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to this item? You can come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Does the council have any questions of staff before we have a motion? I think we're ready.
Thank you. On item 26, the city council will consider the recommendation to adopt Resolution Number 25330, authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for and on behalf of improvement area number two of the city of Roseville, Amoruso Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, otherwise described as public facilities, approving and directing the execution of a fiscal agent agreement and bond purchase agreement, approving the form of preliminary official statement, approving sale of such bonds, and approving other related documents and actions. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Alverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Haldeshell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And we pulled item 27, or continued that.
On item number 27, we just wanted to make sure that the record reflects that the public facilities fee update next to steady adoption in Roseville Municipal Code Amendment, which is a public hearing, will be continued to the November 19, 2025 city council meeting. If I can get a motion, if I can get a motion to continue the public hearing to the November 19, 2025, at the same time in the new meeting location, which is across the street at Roseville Electric Building, first floor, located at 116 South Grant Street. May I please have a motion to continue this item?
Please, yeah, second.
We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Alverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Haldeshell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we'll do our last public comment. Now would be the time for anyone to make a comment on any item that's not on the agenda. Do we have anyone here tonight? No? Okay, close public comment, and we'll hear from staff or council on any reports relative to committee work. Do our staff have anything to share tonight, our city attorney?
Thank you.
No further reports, Mayor.
Does anyone want to start us off with any comments?
I'll run down, run down quickly. Tomorrow, at Seco Board of Directors meeting, there'll be a presentation on Strong Towns, which focuses on infrastructure. In November, the board will adopt its blueprint, and thanks to Lauren Hawker, who's been tracking that process and the regional housing needs analysis. Saturday is the Trash Bash out at the landfill from 9:00 to noon. Saturday, I need some help with the pronunciation, Telerifica Barcelona, I got the Barcelona part right, is opening at the Fountains in the old California Pizza location. There's Invest Health Breakfast at the end of the month, and a point of personal pride, my son and I came in second at the Stone Ridge Bocce Ball Tournament on Saturday.
Good, that's very good.
Very nice.
I don't have any comments for tonight.
All right, that's okay, too. Councilmember Mendoza, do you have any comments?
Just one comment. I had the opportunity to join some of my fellow council members and the mayor at the ribbon-cutting for the River Valley Community Bank. Jeez, what was that, like, yesterday, last week, not yesterday? So that was a good time, and it's good to have them in our community, and we wish them well in their new spot and with their new endeavor. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Just a couple of things. I was able to go to a ribbon-cutting, and so is our mayor, to the ribbon-cutting for the mental health facility and the medium-security vocational training facility at Bill Santucci Justice Center. So this is, and we also got a chair of both facilities, so that was really interesting. And with the vocational training, some of the, there are a lot of skill programs that are, that offer jobs and that are current, that may be able to help someone have the training, and when they get out of jail, that they have something to go to. And the mental health facility, when I heard mental health, I wasn't sure exactly how that, how, what they were presenting, but what this facility mainly does is for people who've been, got themselves in trouble, and they were going to get ready to go to court, but they're not mentally capable of going to court and understanding what they, what they did or what's happening. So these people go here in this facility and get treated for mental health, and when they're able to, then they go and stand to court trial. So that's what we have here in Placer County, which, you know, it's a need. Also, the last couple weeks, we as a whole had the opportunity of go to a board and commission dinner here in downtown Roseville to thank all of our board and commissioners for the work that they do and work with us, and we all worked together for the city of Roseville to make Roseville a wonderful place to live. And also, just a few weeks before that, we had a volunteer luncheon for volunteers that help at Roseville, and there's, were over 50, over 60 of them there. And it just shows you, there's all types of opportunities if you'd like to participate. And our lady here who came in her public comment talks about creek cleaning, there's many, many ways that you can do things that really enhance our city, and we totally appreciate it. And a comment, I was at church this week, and lady caught me afterwards, and her comment was, who's my, who's my council member? And I said, well, there's five council members, and you can talk.
You've got five.
Yeah, you've got five, you don't have one.
Bargain.
Yes, and, and I said, yeah, there's five, you can call and talk to any of us. And then what it boiled down to, she, you know, how do you do it? And I don't know if she'd really want to jump on a computer, but I said, you can get on your phone, and you can call the city hall and tell them what you, what you're, what would you like to talk about? And it boils down, there was two questions on housing, of two friends that were having some issues. And I said, yeah, you can do that. And I gave her my card, you know, hey, and you can call me. But she, but, you know, when you, sometimes when you have something that you want to talk about, but you don't know who to talk to. So it's kind of, it's kind of nice to say, hey, we're out there, and we're accessible.
That's what we're here for.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Just a few things to note on committee work. Last week, actually, the vice mayor and I, I think it was last week, maybe week before, we met with county staff, the county board chair and vice chair, and our city manager and their county executive, just to talk through county-city issues to make sure that we're on the same page with some issues that affect both of us. Let's see, some of the other things that weren't mentioned. I serve on the RPAL Board, which is the Roseville Police Activities League that helps youth in our community, had a board meeting for that, and then they had their signature Brews and Bash fundraising event in the fall, which was a big fundraising success for them that helps them to put on programs for youth. On last Saturday morning, I threw the first pitch. I saw some of you out there, I think, at the Reach Softball Tournament, which was a lot of fun. The names for the teams were very clever. I don't know if you had a chance to look at them, but they're awesome if you haven't. Threw the first pitch there, was at the chamber lunch yesterday, and heard from Placer County's Economic Development Team about things that are happening in our region. Tomorrow morning, our city manager and I will speak to the newest Roseville leadership class, so 25 emerging leaders on how local government works. Placer Valley 2025 is this Friday. I suspect many of us will be there for that. I know our city manager is going to be moderating a couple panels, and I will be moderating one in the morning with the young professionals. Early next week, I'll go speak with the Roseville High School Government Student, so they can learn about local government. I have a, one of my other comedians is GSEC, the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, and we meet next week with some in-market media tour individuals, which will really help to sell Roseville to people who are looking to come here. And we have board and commission openings right now for those that are 18 and over, and Roseville residents, and that's all available on our city's website, too. And when does that close? Do you remember?
I don't remember the date.
It's the 24th. I thought it was October 24th.
The 24th.
24th.
Yes, we have, probably.
So that is a week from this Friday. So we would just encourage community members to look those over, and if there's a good fit, to apply. And I think this is our last meeting until our chambers are redone. So we will meet again November 5. We will meet in the Roseville Electric Building, which is across the street here, 116 South Grant Street. We'll meet on the first floor, and those meetings will be at the same time from November to hopefully around March, assuming we have an on-time construction schedule. So unless anyone else has any other comments tonight, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you for all being here. Thank you for all being here, and we'll see you soon. Thank you.